Makes me think of all those nights you had to. Okay, I'd like to call the Prince William County School Board meeting to order. I need approval of the closed session agenda.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Deutsch.
I move that we approve the closed session agenda as recommended.
Can I get a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Jesse.
I second.
Any discussion? Okay, no discussion, please vote. We got the vote, Debbie? Who's what's wrong?
Nothing.
Okay, moving on. We good?
Yeah. The vote is five yes, three absent, motion passed.
Moving on to a motion that's a closed session, a motion is in order.
Mr. Chairman, I move that pursuant to Virginia Code 2.2-3711, Prince William County School Board enter closed session for the following reasons. One, to discuss and consider the assignment appointment, performance, discipline, resignation, nonrenewals, rescission of contracts and salary adjustments of specific employees, appointees, or officers of the Prince William County School Board under Virginia Code 2.2-3711A1 and A2, to consult with Division Council and receive legal advice regarding actual and probable litigation where such consultation and briefing in open session will adversely affect the negotiation or litigation posture of the school board under Virginia Code 2.2-3711A7. Two, to consult with legal counsel and staff on a specific legal matter involving the school board's efforts to address school overcrowding and land acquisition which requires the advice of council under Virginia Code 2.2-3711A3 and A. Four, to receive information and discuss the actions and discipline of a specific student under Virginia Code 2.2-3711A2, the performance of specific personnel under Virginia Code 2.2-3711A1, and information relating to the security of Hilton High School where a discussion in open session would jeopardize the safety of students or staff and the security of a building under Virginia Code 2.2-3711A19 and 2.2-37052 and 14. Five, to consult with Division Council regarding legal issues involving school boundary assignment plans under Virginia Code 2.2-3711A8. And six, consult with Division Council and staff regarding a matter of public safety, actual and probable litigation, and privacy of individuals not related to public business under Virginia Code 2.2-3711A2, A4, 7, and 19.
Mr. Deutsch, thank you, thank you. Can I get a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Ralston.
I second all that.
Thank you. Any discussion? Please vote. Thank you. The Prince William County School Board will now enter closed session, return to open session in approximately one hour. Thank you. The Prince William County School Board is now returning to open session from closed session. We do not have any closed session action items, do we? We do? No. We're going to move to 801, which is the approval of the... Oh, yeah, we do have an action item, I'm sorry. 801, thank you, Dr. ... Mr. Wilk. The approval of the settlement. Settlement agreement is there, 8.01.
Yes, there it is in case.
We're going to vote on it.
Oh, nobody told me, I'm sorry.
What's on this?
Am I moving?
Sure. Emotions in order.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I move that the Prince William County School Board authorize the Division Superintendent to execute an agreement with the CERTI for J and K Roofing Incorporated relating to partial performance for impermits to school facilities.
Second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Ralston.
I second.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, that should be authorize the chairman to execute the document.
Okay.
If you can make that correction.
Correction is made. Do I need to type something? Mr. Trenum.
Well, I voted yes. We all have good intentions, I think it'll be okay. Fix it after the fact. But we can wait.
So are we going to re-vote? Do we have to have five or something? Well, it looks like it showed up.
Does she want us to vote again?
Didn't change it. Should we have five?
I think we can go ahead and vote for it with the intention that it'll be changed when the actual minutes are written. Can we do that?
Is that legal?
I'm sure it's legal. We can move on.
It's understood that it's to authorize the chairman, not the Division Superintendent.
Chairman, okay. I'll just go ahead, everyone understands that this is authorizing the chairman. Yes, vote yes. Excellent, thank you. And then we're going to move on to ... Moving on to the adoption of the closed session consent agenda, motions in order.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Wilk.
I'm sorry, Mr. Deutsch, you need to vote on that previous motion.
I move.
Vote is eight yes, unanimous, motion passed.
I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the closed session consent agenda as recommended.
Second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Ralston.
I second.
Discussion.
The vote is eight yes, unanimous, motion passed.
Okay, moving on to the closed session certification, a motion is in order.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Wilk.
I move that pursuant to Virginia Code Sections 2.2-3712, the closed session of Prince William County School Board meeting in May 15, 2019, be certified by adopting the following resolution, now therefore be resolved that the school board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open business meeting requirements were discussed in the closed meeting to which the certification resolution applies, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard and discussed or considered by the school board.
Any second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Ralston.
I second.
Okay, any discussion?
The vote is eight yes, unanimous, a motion passed.
We're kicking off the business of our meetings with a response to community requests to hear some great things about our schools, students and staff members and what they're accomplishing. Tonight's Positively, and we call that Positively PWCS, so if you're new and you haven't heard about it, it's called Positively PWCS, we're very excited about it. Tonight's Positively PWCS presentation spotlights Bull Run Middle School. Allison Satterway of the Gainesville District will introduce our presentation. Ms. Satterway.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was really impressed recently by the absolutely amazing show of support by staff and students at Bull Run Middle School for a student with alopecia, and it's an autoimmune disease. In many cases, the act of support included shaving their heads in support. I am honored to introduce Mr. Matthew Fithian, principal, who will share about this outstanding story. Welcome, Mr. Fithian.
Thank you, Mrs. Satterwhite. Good evening, Dr. Walts, members of the Prince William County School Board and guests. I'm Matthew Fithian, principal at Bull Run Middle School, and tonight I'm sharing an uplifting and encouraging story about one of our wonderful students who's with us tonight, Max Renzi. Tonight you will learn about Max's mission challenge and how it proved to be a great feel-good effort across our school. Also with us tonight are Max's parents, Mrs. Renzi and Mr. Renzi, and his family members who are with us in the audience tonight. Also, we have Mr. Paul Monchillo, our PE teacher, who helped support this mission. At this time, I would like to introduce Tracy D'Amico, our school social worker, who really motivated Max to motivate him for this outreach project.
Good evening. One of our sixth grade students, Max Renzi, was recently diagnosed with an autoimmune disease, alopecia. Alopecia is a type of hair loss that occurs when your immune system mistakenly attacks your healthy hair follicles. Max wanted to answer some common questions with his classmates and raise awareness about the disease, so he was the star of a video that was shown school-wide and throughout our community, and at this time, we wanted to show you a small clip of that video.
Hi, my name is Max Renzi, I'm a sixth grade student at Bull Run Middle School. I'm a son, a brother, a baseball player, and a basketball player. I work really hard at school and I enjoy spending time with my friends, and I have alopecia. Alopecia is an autoimmune disease that causes my hair to fall out. There are 6.8 million people in the world that have alopecia, and I am one of them. My immune system attacks my hair so my hair does not grow. I'm extremely healthy, some people look at me and assume I have cancer, but I do not. There's nothing wrong with me. There's possibility that my hair might grow back, then it might fall out again. There are many ways that you can show support and help people experiencing alopecia. You can donate your hair to make a wig for kids with alopecia. You can make a donation to support research. And one other thing is if you want my t-shirt, you can buy it and half of money will be donated to the National Alopecia Areata Foundation. Most importantly, please help by being kind to kids with alopecia.
Today, we're doing our Max Mission Challenge. We're doing this to bring awareness to alopecia, to let the students know what's going on, and hopefully to bring awareness to everybody and get everybody to jump on board and do a challenge with it.
Why don't you go back and take a photo? Because of Max's strength and courage, and with the support of his family, our principal, and the entire school community, on April 10th, Bull Run Middle School stood behind Max and accepted his mission challenge. Our students and staff helped Max raise awareness for alopecia by buzzing their hair, buying a t-shirt, donating their hair, or just simply wearing a hat. The first person that accepted this challenge, as you saw in the video, was Mr. Monchillo, and he's a really cool PE teacher, so he encouraged a lot of people to participate. Also because of Max's effort, he has raised over $4,000 in such a short time that is being directly donated to National Alopecia Areata Foundation, and hopefully with his donations, they're going to find an acceptable treatment and one day a cure. On April 10th, Bull Run community came together to support Max, and this support continues. Because of his bravery, Bull Run Middle School was reminded of kindness, acceptance, and tolerance, and I am pleased to turn it over to this resilient and incredible young man himself, so he can tell you more. Max Renzi.
Thank you for inviting me to speak to you. I'm a sixth grade student at Bull Run Middle School who has been diagnosed with an immune disease, alopecia. Alopecia is a type of hair loss that occurs when your immune system mistakenly attacks your healthy hair follicles. It can occur in men and women of all ages, but children are most affected. This past November is when my hair loss began, and I was bald by February. My classmates asked me questions daily to me, sometimes the same questions over and over again. Most kids were asking because they just didn't know why I was bald, but I began to feel overwhelmed with all the questions. One day, my teacher went above and beyond to connect with me about how it must feel to have alopecia. Mr. Monchillo asked me to shave his hair, which then turned into, it allowed me to feel alone, it didn't allow me to feel alone in school. I wanted to educate and bring awareness to my classmates and the school community on the fact of my condition, which I named Max Mission Challenge. The first challenge occurred on April 10th, where students, teachers, and my family, and my friends were challenged to show support by buzzing their hair, wearing a hat, or buying a Max Mission Challenge shirt. There was a tremendous amount of support at Bull Run Middle School, where 20 kids and three teachers all shaved their heads. Many teachers and kids showed their support by wearing a hat and Max Mission t-shirt. There was also a donation of hair, and people donated money to National Alopecia Areata Foundation, in which we raised to date almost $4,000, to hopefully one day find a cure for alopecia.
Thank you, Mr. Fithian. Okay, next we will begin the meeting. I would like to call this meeting to the Prince William County School Board to order. There'll be a moment of silence at my request, just for a moment here. Thank you. Next, we'll do the pledge of allegiance. If there's a student who would like to come to the mic, please introduce yourself, tell us the school you're at, and lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Thank you. Sasan.
You want to come up? Yeah.
Wait, what do I say again?
Your name and your school.
Okay, I'm Yooni at Mesf, and I go to St. John Paul the Great Catholic High School. I pledge allegiance to the citizens of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Next, we'll move on to the approval of the public meeting agenda, a motion is in order. Mr. Wilk, okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the public meeting agenda as recommended.
Outstanding. Mr. Deutsch, thank you. Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Who was that? Ms. Williams.
I second.
Any discussion? Please vote. Oh, do you have a discussion there? No, that's when we get to the adoption of the consent agenda, so we're just approving. All right, so, any discussion? No? Please vote. Yep, great, thank you. So, I'm going to skip 15, we're going to go to 16, because we're waiting on Ms. Satterway to help us with the adoption of the consent agenda, so I'm going to move to Sasan, if you want to go and give us your student report today.
Hey, everyone, hope everyone's having a great day so far. So, I had my last meeting with an SCA this Monday, and that meeting was with Stonewall Jackson High School's SCA, and as I said last meeting, I met SJ's SCA for the specific reason of discussing boundary proposals, and just for context, at the time of my meeting, Plan 1A had already been released, and that was part of the discussion. I also want to acknowledge that at least I have, I'm sure the other board members as well, have been receiving a lot of emails from Stonewall students, at least, in opposition to the boundary proposals at hand. And in addition to what I said last board meeting, one of the biggest topics of discussion is communication. SJ's students aren't worried that there's a lack of communication, but really a lack of accessible communication. The students feel that the county should make an effort to inform students and parents when events like boundary proposal meetings will occur at an accessible level. Now, when I say accessible, I mean that most parents aren't on social media networks to see updates, and a lot of students really don't have the time to check daily the Prince William County School website, because they either have to go home or work, go home, take care of siblings, go home, and do both, and so that's really an infeasible option. In fact, I was told that most of the promotion of the boundary meeting at Stonewall was because of personal conversations either between the students or teachers, not because of external information. The students feel as though making a more broad effort to spread awareness of when these meetings occur should be enacted. For instance, sending emails to both parents and students would help the situation, or just making a short announcement on the intercom, just somewhere to get the word out where students will hear. The next on this list is really a lack of understanding on how people are chosen or reached out to for that very first preliminary meeting on the boundaries. At least at the Stonewall meeting two weeks ago, everyone was told that there was a preliminary hearing, where the parents who attended had their voice heard, and then the plan was actually changed to accommodate those recommendations. And, yeah, there's just a lack of, there's a confusion on that, and the question that popped up, if someone can answer me at some point in time, email me, was how were those people notified, how many people usually attend, or how many people attended that specific meaning, meeting, and does anyone reach out to the student body impacted by the boundary proposals? The student body at Stonewall feel like it is utterly important to include them in the processes, as most of the time, they are the ones updating their parents on this information. Now, as I said before with my meeting with Patriot High School, but Stonewall brought this to my attention as well, we need to start focusing on long-term goals rather than short-term progressions. The students are concerned that the boundary process is becoming more of a repetitive cycle of moving students from one place to another. Instead of focusing solely on boundary decisions for the school being currently built, the students believe that we should simultaneously focus on multiple projects in order to ensure a steady education. Now, on a different note, the students said they appreciated the interpersonal relationships within the schools. They praised their teachers' willingness to be flexible and understanding when a student needs help. They, to add on, actually, they also appreciate their administration's willingness to allow them to complete projects, such as the painting murals on the walls. Now, onto student spotlight, I actually want to point to a large group of students that attended the One for All Ball, or I should say, the first ever One for All Ball. For those that don't know, Prince William County Schools had its first-ever additional countywide prom for students within the Special Education Department, and it was a blast. Now, just to numerically quantify how much fun we had, to demonstrate how much fun we had, I'll point to a few numbers. We went through 800 chicken nuggets donated from Chick-fil-A, 20 boxes of pizza, over 100 chips, snacks, and hundreds of sweets. There's a DJ game room, and Stonewall Jackson actually offered help by providing free makeup for students that wanted it, and personally, my favorite was the breakdancing competitions in the middle of the dance floor, so really appreciated that. And I obviously want to say a couple of thank yous. Thank you to Risk Management, Office of Student Services for really helping us out, from like the tiny things to responding to emails really quickly, or like helping us reserve rooms and reserve the atrium, just thank you guys for all of that, really. Thank you to the SCA presidents, SGA presidents that helped along with that. Without that, without them, there would be really no execution of this plan. Thank you to the parents that gave input to the teachers that related back to us, and thank you to the students for having fun. I do want to shout out, thank you for the custodial staff that were there that night, thank you for the security guard that was there that night, thank you for the nurse for offering her time to appear, just in case emergencies happen. Also, thank you to the student volunteers. If I'm missing anyone, obviously, I'm really sorry, but we made history on Saturday, I'm glad it happened, I can't wait to see how it is next year. Now, lastly, I wanted to point out that this was, that this is my second-to-last meeting. After this, I will not attend the June 5th meeting, because I graduated the day before and I just want to sleep. I will attend the last meeting of the year with the boundary decision, as I feel that there should be a student on this side of the dais when that decision is made. Other than that, students can always email me at my Prince William County given email, I'll spell it out, F-A-R-A-J-S-A-19@PWCS.edu.org. Thank you.
I'm going to take a moment here, because I don't think Sasan will be here for the end of the meeting tonight, because we're going to go to a special closed session, and so I think he'll take off, but I don't want to under sort of sell what they accomplished. Sasan Faraj and the student members of this board and the student council or Student Government Association presidents of every high school got together, and they decided to have a prom for our special education students, and Dr. Justin Wilk and I were in attendance this weekend. It was absolutely magical, it was truly wonderful. It's the best event I've had to attend as being school board chair in the 13 months I've been school board chair. It was fantastic. So, I can't thank you enough, Sasan, and I hope, you know, by it being the first annual, we will continue this. You've set the bar high for the next student members and our student council presidents, and I think one should, you know, if there's ever any concern about handing off our country to the next generation, let me tell you, the optimism that I have after seeing these leaders, these young kids, do what they did for the special education kids and the special ed kids who came and enjoyed it, it was fantastic, and so I'm 100% confident that if I'm turning over the government and our country to these guys, we're going to be better off than we are today. So, thank you again, Sasan. I'm going to move to ... We're going to drop back to 1501, or 15, the adoption of the consent agenda, motions in order. Mr. Chairman. Mr. Wilk.
I move that the Prince William County School Board approved, oh, sorry, I'm jumping ahead, that the Prince William County School Board approved the public meeting consent agenda as recommended.
Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Ralston.
I second.
Okay. Are we good? Oh, okay, so, I know, seeing there's no discussion, we'll vote.
Mr. Deutsch.
Oh, Mr. Deutsch.
I wanted to just say two things on two different items here, very quickly. 1504, the proposed rezoning, there's only two houses in it, so it's not going to have significant impact on schools, and so I don't think we're going to be opposing it. Number two, 1505, it's conflict of interest policy, which we discussed the last meeting. Just wanted to follow up, there was Amy White and an extensive group of people from across the school division, did a, had a committee reviewing it, discussing it, going over a whole lot of things. Our coaches are essential parts of our school system, and they aren't full-time positions, they're going to be involved in, in the community in various ways. What this does is make sure that any potential conflicts of interest are stated at the front of the school year, and our staff and them are both aware of what we would do to mitigate anything, and we have everything on paper in advance. So, it should make things clear and transparent, but still encourage us to support our coaches, we need them, and we're going to keep having people who are heavily involved in the community involved in coaching our students.
Thank you, Mr. Deutsch. Just also, since you brought it up in the conflict of interest policy, I did clarify with Ms. Amy White, it'll be the Office of Human Resources that will enforce and ensure compliance with that, with the new policy.
The vote is eight yes, unanimous, motion passed.
Great. Next, we'll go to citizen comments, and what we will do here is, tonight we have 10 folks, so they will all get to speak, and I will call your names, and you can please come up to the front. Cornelia Long, Debbie Oakley, Alejandro Cabrera, Carol Bass, Anastasia Cartilage, Jennifer Gilly, Richard Jesse, Dr. Kate Olson Flynn, Aurora Hurtado. You'll have three minutes to speak, and the clerk will keep the time, the lights on the monitor will indicate your progress, the yellow light will signify that you should sum up your position, red indicates your time is up and you should stop, please use proper decorum and manners while at the podium, if you do not do so, you will be asked to step aside. Please give your name and address for the record when you approach the podium. The last person I didn't call up, Sonia Dorland, you can also take a seat up front. Our speaker is, first, Cornelia Long.
Our speaker is, first, Cornelia Long.
You ready? Okay, great. My name is Cornelia Hawkins Long, and my address is on file with the clerk. Greetings, Dr. Walts, Dr. Latif, and distinguished board members. The month of May is Better Speech and Hearing Month, and the very best time to educate our school communities about the magic speech-language pathologists create every day in the lives of the students we service. Did you know that 8 to 9% of young children suffer from speech sound disorders? That means children have a speech delay, and that means that some students cannot pronounce the S sound, or the R sounds, or the L sounds, and that's when speech pathologists make the magic. Currently, SLPs throughout the Commonwealth operate on a caseload maximum of 68. This law was enacted in the General Assembly in 1975, well before a lot of us were born. That was some humor. Thank you. However, I would submit to the board that surveying a caseload of 68 students is akin to running a marathon with a 20-pound backpack. It is not impossible, but it is difficult. But as speech pathologists, we have been making the magic work for over 43 years. And so the standards of quality is currently being reviewed by the Virginia Department of Education, and caseload recommendations and reductions will be recommended, and the language of workloads will be introduced. And I am happy to serve on that advisory council. In Prince William County, our leaders are striving to cap caseloads at 55. We are encouraged, we are thankful for their support in this effort. However, there is still much work to be done. And so, we would like the school board to consider a policy stipulating that SLPs will carry a workload of no more than 55 students and a caseload of no more than 60 students. Because as you see, a caseload of 60 at a Title I school is very different than a caseload of 60 at a non-Title I school. And so why do we want to reduce caseloads? Simple, to increase individualized instruction, so that students spend less time in special education, and so that we can attract the best and brightest speech pathologists that this country has to offer. And so we ask each and every school board member to join the conversation. Help us take our practice from good to great. And in closing, I'd like to offer one quote. An educator provides hope and light. A great educator enhances opportunities for greatness, optimism, and success. Thank you for this space.
Good evening, Dr. Walts and school board members. My name is Debbie Oakley, and my address is on file. I too am a speech-language pathologist in Prince William County. And first, I wanted to thank you for recognizing the work that we do by signing the resolution designating May is Better Speech and Hearing Month. So, thank you. Also, in honor of Better Speech and Hearing Month, I'm following up on what my colleague, Cornelia, started to address. In addition to caseload concerns, we would also like to open up discussions that address the excessive and sometimes unnecessary paperwork. At the end of the day, this affects the quality of services we are able to provide our students, and we really want to do better. Specifically, may the school board consider our progress reporting policy. Currently, Prince William County Schools' special educators report progress on each goal for each special education student every four and a half weeks. When surveying neighboring school divisions, we have found that most report progress every nine weeks, as we once used to do. For those speech pathologists that carry a caseload of 68, this does become burdensome. For example, some students may have more than one speech goal. It would not be unusual for a speech pathologist to log 102 progress notes every four and a half weeks. Frequency of progress reporting is a growing concern among all special education educators, and I feel confident in saying we would like- we would all like to be more productive with our time. Two, may the school board also consider facilitating conversations about how we could streamline our data input in ed plan to reduce redundancy and increase our efficiency when logging Medicaid billable services. Because speech pathologists tend to log the most amount of sessions and we carry the largest caseloads, this too becomes a significant amount of time which we could be spending servicing our students. While we realize the significant revenue contributions we make towards the general fund by our logging, we believe there are steps we can take to minimize the redundancy and increase our efficiency. Finally, we would like to continue open discussions that we have started with our special education directors and administrators. We thank them for their support and the interest they have shown us this far, but we also are asking the school board to engage in these conversations so that we can all better understand our concerns. Ultimately, we are seeking to increase our purpose, which will allow us to better influence student growth and success in Prince William County. And after all, speech is priceless. Thank you.
Thank you. Alejandro Cabrera. Alejandro Cabrera, okay. Next, Carol Bass.
My name is Carol Bass, and my address is on file. Good evening, Dr. Latif, school board members, and Dr. Walts. As supervisor of world languages, it is my pleasure to share that my office sponsored our second annual division-wide world language middle and high school poster contest this year, celebrating the National Foreign Language Week theme, Languages Are the Key to the World. Middle and high school teachers of all 10 languages were invited to participate. Please note that students were required to use the language they are learning for all written messages, among other graphic parameters. I am grateful to our three volunteer judges, all retired former Prince William County Schools' leaders. Mrs. Debbie Bernard, visual arts coordinator for the division; Mrs. Charlene Barron, world language department chair and Spanish teacher at Marsdeller Middle School; and Mrs. Phyllis Fenner, world language department chair and French teacher at Woodbridge High School. And for the work of my secretary, Mrs. Jackie Share. At this time, I am proud to present to you and to our school community our top three high school poster winners and their teachers. Students, you're here, so I don't need to call you forward. First of all, in first place, Tariq El Bakuri, with his teacher, Mrs. Catherine Mays, from Garfield High School. In second place, Corinne Ellsworth, with her teacher, Mr. Miguel Hernandez, from Osborne Park High School. In third place, Shaila Shigito, who cannot join us tonight, but is represented by her teacher, Mr. Oligario Melendez, from Hilton High School. Congratulations, high school student winners. In conclusion, I would like to thank our school administrators, parents, and family members, many of whom are here tonight, for their ongoing support of our students and our world language program. And I would like to thank you, Dr. Latif, school board members, and Dr. Walts, for your support of world language study all through the years in Prince William County Schools. And now, Mrs. Anastasia Cartilage, our world language instructional coach, will present our top three middle school poster contest winners. Thank you.
And I'm your next speaker as well.
Well, she introduced you, so, but I'll do it for a public- Anastasia Cartilage.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Bass. Good evening, Dr. Latif, members of the school board, and Dr. Walts. I am Anastasia Cartilage, and my address is on file. Thank you for your time this evening to honor these students. As Mrs. Bass said, I will now introduce the middle-level winners of the division's world language poster contest. Students and teachers, please stand to my left with your poster when you are called. The first-place winner is Justice Sullivan, with Mrs. Jamie Arredondo, from Bull Run Next, in second place, is Amran Mesfin, with Ms. Lauren Bortfeld, from Porter Traditional School. And in third place, is Amy Chavez, a student of Mrs. Dee Berrios, from Saunders Middle Students, please turn to show the audience your posters. Congratulations, students, and thank you, teachers, parents, and administrators, for your dedication to our students. Thank you also, Dr. Latif, members of the school board, and Dr. Walts, for your support of world languages in Prince William County. Thank you.
Thank you. Wonderful, wonderful. Jennifer Gilli.
Gilli.
Gilli, that's Gilli. It's been a while. I'm so sorry.
You know, Dr. Latif, I was just going to say, good evening, Dr. Walts, Dr. Latif, and board. My name is Jennifer Gilli, and my address is on file. It's been a little while since I've been here at your board meetings. I know school board meetings should always come first, and I apologize for my absence. But even without my presence, the Parents Who Care have continued to fight for the older schools in the county to be brought up to date with the newer schools. First, I want to thank you for the improvements at Woodbridge High School. The turf field is well under construction, and all the teams anxiously await the new year to be able to try it out. We look forward to less mud, less cancellation or moving of games, more practice times, and more Viking championships in the future. And now, the indoor teams are also getting two basketball courts added to the current court to beef up those programs. Thank you for this extra bonus. It's amazing what you can do when you ask for something, isn't it? Thank you for the raises for the teachers. They absolutely earn the seven hours a day with mine and every other child in the county, too. And since our Parents Who Care group is about more than just Woodbridge High School, I ask that you look at the plans for the new 14th high school that are just being brought to the community's attention. We were told a new high school would be built on the east side of the county to alleviate overcrowding along the Route 1 corridor, which is why the Raise Regards community was approved by both you and the county supervisors. So, the plan is to bus students from Route 1, past Freedom, Garfield, and Woodbridge to go to a new school on Holy and the Parkway. How does that fix the problem of traffic, buildings, and lessen the students' bus travel time? I'm sure that is something that you all have considered in these plans. We need to start looking in other directions, like up, to help our community. It seems no one is willing to limit the growth, since we now are looking at a parking structure at Wegmans for commuters on I-95 to use. This will absolutely increase the number of students in the county, because we've been told that anyone who works in the county can bring their children to school in the county. Just a huge invitation for Stafford and Point South to jump on 95 and join the Prince William County school system. We've been to lots of meetings, you know, and everyone says that parking structures and multi-level buildings are so much more expensive to build due to the construction codes. What choice do we have? Just when you think there's no more room for homes, someone finds a parcel of land to squeeze in another 150-plus homes, apartments, and condos. As a military family, we have lived other places where strip malls were converted to high schools rather than knocking them down. I'm sure this is the best solution for our 14th high school, so my next recommendation for you to consider is to increase specialty programs at the schools, possibly moving programs, to make them more of a draw for students. Both academic and CTE programs at each high school will increase diversity in some schools and level the playing field in others. We hear every day it's not fair about one thing or another from our children, and life isn't fair, but we can do our best to make it equitable in our county so that all of our children are afforded the same world-class education that you all strive to give. Thank you.
Richard Jesse.
Good evening. My name is Richard Jesse, and my address is on file. Dr. Latif, Dr. Walts. During the last boundary hearing, I recommended that the school board consider modifying the way the school board handles the boundary requests. And I think we have another example of a real fiasco of things going on with this boundary. What I recommended before, and I think is still valid, is that the school board, the school division, and the principal should get together beforehand and come up with a plan, and then present it to the citizens, and then take comments. Mr. Trent last time said, "We'd never take the first plan anyway." Well, that's because you guys are the one that are responsible for the plan, and so I think you should consider, you know, coming up with a plan and presenting it. The world report came out a few days, World News Report, and it reported that down the high school, Osborne Park is ranked number 25 in the state. Battlefield is ranked number 26. Stonewall, I mean, I'm sorry, Patriot is ranked 34th, and Stonewall is ranked 202. When you look at the scores and the demographic, Stonewall is extremely high, went from 80-some percent minorities to 89%, and both plans presented. That's an issue and a concern. When you look at graduation rates, Stonewall, or, I'm sorry, the graduation rate for Patriot was 98%, for Stonewall, it's 85%. Simply stated, parents have a concern that where their kids go to school. If you had a choice, would you want to go to Stonewall, would you want to go to Patriot? The solution is to fix Stonewall and the other schools so that they all are performing at high levels. Okeechobee Elementary School has almost the same demographic as Stonewall, and yet is one of the best schools in the county and the state. So, if we can do that for Stonew- for Okeechobee, we can fix, so, I can assure you, people want to go to Okeechobee. People now want to go to Fred Lynn. If you improve the schools, people will want to go, and they will not want to have to and have to leave. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Kate Olson Flynn.
Good evening, school board, Dr. Walts. My name is Kate Olson Flynn, and my address is on file. Equal doesn't mean equity. I know it's my theme. It is evident that many school leaders conflate these two ideas, thinking that if they give equally to all schools, then they created an unbiased and non-discriminatory system. And I'm here to tell you that giving equally to all schools does not equate to the same opportunities to succeed for all students. A truly equitable school system would not provide the same budget to all schools, and the reason is this: Not all schools are created equal, and not all students come to school with the same resources and parent educational background. And I have a few examples of this in Prince William County. Compare a school like Stonewall Jackson to Patriot. Stonewall Jackson has a school building that is falling apart, overcrowded, and outdated technologically and instructionally in every way. Patriot has state-of-the-art equipment, instructional and recreational space, and technology that is up to date with how kids think, learn, and interact. There is no equality in that. Now, let's compare the demographics at the schools. Stonewall Jackson has a student population that is much more disadvantaged and culturally and linguistically diverse than Patriot. With the budget increase of some federal money from Title I, do you really think that meager amount of extra money makes up for the fact that Patriot students can afford tutors, club sports, and SAT prep? Or how one school's PTO raises enough money to pay for better computers, software, and sports equipment, when the other one doesn't even have a PTO? There is no equality in that. I even know one high school in Prince William County that has enough discretionary money to pay for the PSAT test to be given to its students in both ninth and 10th grade. Needless to say, this brand-new school doesn't have a high percentage of poor kids. How is that equal or equitable? Shouldn't all kids get to practice the PSAT twice? A true equitable school system would provide students with high populations of ELLs and underprivileged kids with more resources, more teachers, more counselors, more money, and updated and new buildings in which to learn. So, you're thinking, how does this relate- So you're thinking, how does this relate to the 14th High School? Well, because you voted for a site located in an upper-middle-class area, you are perpetuating the inequity and segregation in this county. There will now be even more disadvantaged kids at old, outdated schools. And my question to you is this: What is your vision for high schools in Prince William County? What are the strategies, programs, resources, boundaries, and money are you going to use to make up for segregating more disadvantaged kids into dilapidated old schools? How will you bring equity and opportunities to those communities? And I do have a first-step solution: Rebuild and significantly renovate all the older schools first in the CIP, as the task force recommended. That way, Prince William County can actually claim honestly that they are at least providing facilities that are equal and world-class for all students in the county. Thank you.
Aurora Hurtado?
So, good evening, Dr. Walts, Dr. Latif, and members of the board. Aurora Hurtado, my information is on file with the clerk. If someone had told me a few months ago that I was going to be talking to our school board about segregation, I would have thought that was a bad joke, I mean, not in this day and age. But I'm here frankly shocked at the economic and racial segregation happening on our high schools under your stewardship. My children are years away from high school. If things continue the way they are for our family, I'm confident that by the time they have to attend high school, if we are soon to a crumbling school with no choices for good specialty programs, my kids will be able to apply to a shiny new school with an attractive program. More likely, I'll be able to drive them until they can drive themselves, or we may move. I was willing to do that for my elementary school, why not for high school? Is that ideal? Absolutely not. It is also not a choice for our most vulnerable population, and if many of us make those choices, inequities will only rise in our district. What would be ideal is that all comparable specialty programs are allocated evenly among all high schools, that all high schools have the infrastructure to support specialty programs. We want students to apply to a specialty program truly based on their interest, and not because they want to get away from a crumbling school. The way boundaries are being set for the 13th High School seem like disadvantaged kids and English learner students are just being set aside, leaving Stonewall Jackson with a projected 89 percent minority and 61 percent economically disadvantaged population with limited specialty programs, nothing close to the options on the Global Citizenship Program for the 13th High School. And yet, here we are, planning to get land on that same district to build the 14th High School. Can we slow down on the "build, build, build" mentality of our county supervisors? Before we ask the county supervisors for $150 million for a new school, probably we need to get $50 million to modernize each of our five older high schools so they can have the infrastructure needed to support specialty programs. Let's improve what we have. Let's level the playing field for our communities. Instead of furthering the inequities we are creating by building shiny new schools, telling our longtime residents that their older communities and schools don't matter as much as the new communities and new residents coming over to where the new schools are located. Thank you.
Hi. I'm one of the last of our group, PWC. Want to give a quick shout-out to, I'm Sonia Dorland, by the way. Dr. Latif, you said my name right. Thank you for that. Awesome. I just want to give a shout-out to all of our awesome friends that couldn't be here tonight that was going to speak, but they're out of town, so our PWC group. I thank them for all the work that we put in to be here every Wednesday night, or every other Wednesday night, or whenever you guys have meetings, because, as I said before, without speech, we wouldn't be able to get things that we need or want for our schools. With that being said, I wanted to talk to you about our older schools. I'm thankful for what you have given us for Woodbridge Senior High School and Garfield High School, but I know that if we focus on renovating our older schools, like all of my friends said before, that we could obtain more wonderful programs, and our already amazing schools would also benefit our schools. Renovations, we better to benefit our community. And as we build these expensive, overrated schools, like my friend said, we would have to move, but we don't want to move. We love our communities. And as I'm asking, Mr. Dolch, Dolch, can you, I feel like I'm important for you to at least listen to what I have to say. And you're looking down, I don't know if you're texting or looking at your computer, but can you just listen? Because it's important that we be heard. It's very sad that we have to sit here and not be able to talk to you, and that you're doing whatever you're doing, I don't know, but it's important to us. This is our community. This is our families.
Yeah, if you keep to the topic, that'd be great. Thank you.
Yes, but it's important to us. Our communities mean a lot, and I've been asking, like the last time, that all of you from different districts, the Gainesville District, Niobsko, Woodbridge, all of you come to the other districts to see why we love our schools so much? Why can't we build and renovate what we love and have that in our community as well as the others, like the other schools? Why do we have to go through, coming here to preach to everybody, to say, "Why do you have to give us another boundary issue?" That we have to fill the whole room and open up the doors to have families come here and beg you to stay at their schools that they love and stay in their communities? Why? So let's please renovate our old schools. Give us awesome schools that all of our kids want to attend, that we can stay in our communities without having to go somewhere else to try to regroup our families. Thank you.
We'll move on to 1801, the Safe Schools Advisory Council Annual Report. Jarson Hart?
Good evening, Chairman Latif, our child-centered chairman, and members of the esteemed school board, and to Dr. Walts, our committed superintendent. I am honored and proud to serve as the facilitator for the Safe Schools Advisory Council. Absolutely, we are excited about the important work of mental wellness. This year's Parent Information Night was on the topic of resiliency. Let's welcome our dedicated and dependable chairman, Mrs. Ann Nuzzo, to the podium, so she can share the Safe Schools Advisory Council's efforts and accomplishments for school year 2018 through 2019. Mrs. Nuzzo?
Thank you, Ms. Hart. Good evening. As Ms. Hart indicated, my name is Ann Nuzzo, and I am the chair of the Safe Schools Advisory The Safe Schools Advisory Council was created by the school board in 2009 to support safety and security of students, staff, and schools. Over time, our focus has changed from hardware to mental health awareness and prevention. At this time, I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge the members of the Safe Schools Advisory Council present here tonight. If you'd please stand. Please stand. The Safe Schools Advisory Council is comprised of two school board members, eight parent volunteers who represent the seven school districts, and representative-at-large. We have members who represent each of the main levels of education. In addition, we have school representatives from the Student Services, Threat Assessment, Risk Management. We also fortunate enough to have community representatives from law enforcement, fire, and rescue. Thank you all for your volunteerism. The Safe Schools Advisory Council has tackled many timely topics since its inception, including bullying prevention, mental health awareness, suicide prevention, gang violence, opioid abuse epidemic. This year, the Safe Schools Advisory Council focused on resiliency at home, school, and the community. On March 26, the Safe Schools Advisory Council was fortunate enough to be able to provide a presentation to the school community from subject matter expert, Dr. Jim Harris, and here's a clip of that presentation.
So, look at your things that your kids are good at and that they're interested in, and nurture those things as opposed to a specific idea or concept. If you haven't had a chance, there's a great series of books called The Love Languages. I've really loved these books. And Chapman does a great job of talking about, you may have kids in your home, and one kid has one way that they feel like they're getting the feedback that they need, and another kid might have another way that they get the feedback. Like my littlest one, Cody, quality time is his love language. That's success to him. That feels good to him. If we're gonna go, we're gonna go build Legos in his room. That fills his tank. That's the way that Chapman talks. That fills his tank, right? My older one, words of affirmation are big for him. Like, "Appreciate you, Jake. Proud of you. Like how you got that done? How's that feel? Good?" Then I watch that fill his tank. And one of the things I wanted, I'm not asking you to go get a degree in psychology or whatever it might be, and maybe you already have one, but what I want you to do is to approach parenting with a level of intention about what you're building, about building a balanced psychology, about, you know, you want to raise a 25-year-old at Thanksgiving dinner that laughs and tells stories about, "Remember when Dad did this?" Or, "Remember how they used to make us do that?" Or whatever it might be, but then they're entering into the world with, they're prepared for the things that are going to happen.
Thank you. Dr. Harris's presentation was very informative and very well-received. As you just saw, Dr. Harris discussed Gary Chapman and Ross Campbell's book, Love Languages. Tonight, six members of the Safe Schools Advisory Council have a copy of this book. Those members are tasked with providing these copies to six members of the community here tonight, so feel free to distribute them. Looking forward, the Safe Schools Advisory Council hopes to continue to provide timely and relevant information to families and to continue to partner with the community to ensure the safety of our entire school community. Thank you. Did you have questions? I walked away before that part.
Yeah, where's my copy of the book?
You have to be out here.
Oh, I see. I don't know what kind of committee you're running over there, Wilk.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Wilk?
Thank you, everyone, for being here. It's been an honor to be on this council since I came on the board with Ms. Satterway. I think we both stayed on the entire time. So it's the evolution of what we've gone through, from when we came on to looking at physical security structures, to more of the mental health, SEL, learning components of a child, has been something that I think truly remarkable and stands out with this committee's focus. You know, a lot of people, you know, we think safe schools and stuff, of course, the physical, the security, the cameras, the locked fronts, and all those entrances are very important, but I think we've also grown as a group to focus also on the mental well-being of a child. I want to recognize my member that I appointed, Kathy Stripmadder. She doesn't even live in the Potomac District, but she found me, and her passion for this whole well-roundedness of children, protecting children, bullying, suicide prevention, I think many of the members of the board will remember, Mr. Brent Fries and Payden's Project, a group that's still active today, and Kathy's passion for that, I wanted her to represent, and she has served, I think, all the whole time, so I want to thank you for that, being an active member of this group and representing the interests of all students in this county. So thank you.
Ms. Satterway?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mrs. Hart, I want to thank you for facilitating, because you've been with us for many years with this council, since before I think I even came on, and so thank you for facilitating and keeping us focused. Ms. Nuzzo, thank you so much for your leadership this year as president of our council, and I really appreciate that. And for all the members here, for those who weren't able to be here tonight, because I know people had other things going on, too, I want to thank my representative, Jeffrey Bergman. And there's a lot that we do throughout the year, and then throughout the years, with safe schools. And safe schools, as we say, are everybody's business. And I also want to thank Mr. Crowe, who people might not realize is on our Safe Schools Council and has provided a tremendous amount of input, and I'm sure he will next year as well. And, Dr. Walts, thank you, and for the previous board who approved Safe Schools Council, because this is important work. It's important to continue to bring awareness to the fact that, yes, we are interested in our physical safety, we are interested in healthy students to make those healthy schools. And so, thank you, everyone, for your hard work and for being invested.
Thank you.
Mr. Trentum?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First off, I would like to recognize my representative of the Safe Schools Advisory Council as well, Ms. Nuzzo.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, once again. In earlier times, I was one of the school board representatives to the Safe Schools Advisory Council, and I always found it to be a very rewarding, a rewarding effort to be involved in. I was kind of sad when I came back and I was no longer on the Safe Schools Advisory Council, but that's okay, because other people need opportunities as well. So, once again, thank you, and I look forward to, have you all started talking about what you're gonna, what you're gonna focus on next year?
Not yet.
Not yet?
If you have any great ideas, we'll be happy to receive them.
All right. I always have ideas. But thank you. I look forward to hearing what you plan on doing next year.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Ms. Ralston?
Thank you. I want to say thank you, because I came to your meeting with this last person that you showed. He was really, really a good speaker. I think that parents should see this, and so whatever opportunities that I can help you do, I would love to be able to have you show at least a portion, a good enough portion, that people can understand what's happening. So...
It is on the website. It's on our Safe Schools Advisory Council website, the full presentation.
Oh, that's...
It will be ASAP.
Or it will be.
We are so good.
It will now.
So I thank you very much, as you were chaired for this. This was very good, and of course, you know, you love kids.
Thank you.
You can tell, because you start doing just that, smiling and grinning. That's the love of children.
My pleasure to serve.
Yeah, she is the sunshine today. But I thank you very much, and I will come back again. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Ms. Williams?
I unfortunately didn't make the presentation this year. I have been to presentations in the past. I just wanted to take the opportunity to say thank you. I think this is one of the more valuable, not that any committee is any better than the other, but I think that the effort and time that put in, and the programming, is something that really is applicable to our entire school community, and it really affects all of us. Your topics are always timely for what's going on in our society at the time, which I don't know how you amazingly always hit the nail on the head with that. It's like magic, but I really value what you do, and I also like the fact that it is going to be available for the public after a meeting has occurred, because we all know sometimes how hard it is to get to certain places. I value the fact that you spread your presentations around, and one time it's on one end or one location, another time it's another location, but just your ability to work together as a group, to settle on a topic, to always be available if there are questions, because I know sometimes throughout the year, people come ask me, and I'm like, "Go this way." Never had anybody come back and say, "Hey, no one followed up with me." It's never occurred. And to Ms. Hart, the joy and sunshine that you bring every time you hit the podium with Safe Schools is very infectious, and I just want to say thank you. I always look forward to this presentation every year, so thank you for all that you do for all of us.
Thank you, Ms. Hart. Thank you. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, guys. I'd like to also point out, the first person I got to appoint for anything was Ms. Robin Morrow, who I didn't see here today, but thank you for serving on the board. And thank you, Ms. Hart, for your lively introduction, enthusiastic commitment, and general optimism. Always appreciated. Next, we will move to superintendent's time. Dr. Stephen Walts, superintendent of Prince William County Schools.
Thank you very much, Chairman Latif, members of the board. Congratulations to school counselors Rebecca Marshall at Bel Air, Beth Anderson, and Janet Pennington at Glenn Kirk, and Sarah Fullerton, and Kimberly Kaiser at Gravely Elementary Schools. These counselors have demonstrated their commitment to best counseling practices, earning recognition from the American School Counselor Association, ASCA, for ensuring their students have the most supportive environment in which to learn. These three programs have earned the recognized ASCA Model Program, RAMP, designation for going to... RAMP, designation for going above and beyond supportive students aligning with the criteria in the ASCA national model to deliver a comprehensive, data-informed school counseling program and an exemplary educational environment. Tyler Akona, Lee Eichen, and Candace Todd, all seniors at Woodbridge High School, are three of the six winners of the 2019 Very Special Arts Playwright Discovery Competition. This nationwide competition encourages students to write plays that explore life with disabilities using experiences and observations from their own lives. Tyler, Eichen, and Candace had the honor of having their one-act plays performed at the Kennedy Center over spring break. Last week, the school division broke ground on our middle school in the Potomac Shores neighborhood. State Senator Scott Suravel and county supervisor Maureen Cattigan joined us to celebrate this beautiful sight. The new three-story middle school to open 2021 will house up to 1,475 students. Over the last few weeks, I've had the honor to observe the unique talents of our students and staff in a variety of entertaining events. I had the opportunity to taste many new healthy and tasty options offered to our students and their families during the 29th Annual PWCS Food Show. Kudos to Adam Russo and his fantastic staff for the great event, allowing students and staff to try food and share their opinions to shape future menus. And by the way, there were a lot of vegetarian items, which has been highly requested the last year or so, so more of those on the way. The Colgan High School Center for the Performing Arts presented Innovation, which showcased the talented dancers in our school division. The sweeping movements, colors, and sounds were breathtaking. Patriot High School presented Fiddler on the Roof, which was a dynamic blend of emotion and fun. The pit orchestra was made up of almost entirely student musicians who never missed a beat. From the fiddler on the roof to the players on the stage, bravo. I returned to Hilton High School last week for the Muslim Student Association and Dance Group's 13th Annual International Night. I was amazed by the performances and the fashion show featuring beautiful and diverse attire from a variety of countries around the world, including Ghana, Ethiopia, Afghanistan, Thailand, Vietnam, El Salvador, China, and more. I joined Chairman Latif in attending and participating in the 25th Annual Putnam County Spelling Bee. At Battlefield High School, great cast, crew lighting, scenic and props, costuming, sound, makeup, production, and more. The student athletic leadership team invited me to the Woodbridge High School Home Run Derby last Saturday. The rain held off, and we were able to feature a lot of outstanding hitters while raising money to feed needy children. Dr. Latif and I also got to meet the new Viking mascot, who was a lot of fun. Also on Saturday, I had the pleasure of attending Garfield High School's presentation of A Midsummer Night's Dream. I was so impressed with the students taking on such an ambitious production. Shakespeare is not easy, and those students did a marvelous job. Thanks to the coordination of student representative Sasan Faraj right here, the Student Government Association from all high schools came together to host the All-for-One Ball in Prom, as he mentioned earlier tonight, last Saturday, at the Kelly Leadership Center. I enjoyed the event, and I salute the student leaders who planned and implemented the outstanding prom with fun decorations, great music, and great refreshments. And by the way, they started there at 8:00 a.m. on Sunday to do the decorations. Great job. Saturday was wrapped up with a visit to see the PWCS Jazz Festival, featuring jazz ensembles from Osburn Park, Stonewall Jackson, and Forest Park High Schools, and it was over at Stonewall Jackson High School. The concert of talented musicians was a great way to finalize a busy Saturday. And last night, I had the pleasure of attending the Forest Park Band's 2019 Spring Concert. It was very impressive, great night of musicianship, and they, it was very well-executed by all the students and the teacher as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Walts. And next, we're gonna vote. I need a motion for the closed meeting, approval for the closed session agenda.
What?
Oh, are we gonna, are we gonna do Board Matters, or are we gonna come back out and do that?
You do Board Matters.
So we're gonna do Board Matters, then go into closed session, and then, okay, so, okay, guys, it's nine o'clock, so let's try to keep it, we're gonna do Board Matters, right?
Twenty oh one.
What is twenty oh one? Where, oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Sorry, sorry. Got it. Revision of Policy 701, Code of Behavior. Got it. Jumped ahead. Sorry, folks.
So, good evening, Chairman Latif, school board members, and Dr. Walts. Tonight, we are proposing an update to the Language and Policy 701 Code of Behavior policy, which includes revisions to ensure consistency with the content of the Code of Behavior, which is updated annually, and the board will see the changes in the Code of Behavior in June. As you know, the Code of Behavior establishes the expectation that helps promote and ensure a safe school environment for all students.
Mr. Deutsch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Maybe this is the right place for this question, but the issue, the, I believe the state government just passed a law on smoking, restricting it further in terms of young people, and some further crackdowns, and vaping's been kind of taking off in the high school level. Does anything in terms of this address those issues?
So this is the policy, but you'll see in the Code of Behavior when it comes before the board in June, that we've made those updates and changes, and you'll see the notations for saying that there is no vaping or any tobacco use on school property.
Cool. So you're saying you were gonna put all that in the regulations? Is that what I'm hearing, or?
It'll be in the Code of Behavior document that you see. You already have the changes that you've seen for the, for the policy and the regulation. These are just kind of general guidelines for how we put together the Code of Behavior, but when the Code of Behavior actually comes forward and you have that presentation, you'll see that those are some of the updated changes.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Sasan Faraj, do you have anything to add to this? I know this is, this impacts students.
Yeah, I was going to say something about it, but you're saying that there will be another presentation come June.
The actual Code of Behavior will come forward in June.
Do you know if it's the June 5th meeting or the meeting afterwards?
So you'll see it on both meetings. So you'll see it for first reading on June 5th, and then the second meeting in June will be on consent.
Okay. Yeah, I was just gonna draw attention to two portions of this. If we look at the information, the information-only PDF, it's the current with proposed changes. At the bottom of the second paragraph, it states that the Code of Behavior and any subsequent revision shall be presented by the administration to the PWCS Board annually for its review and approval, and then later down, it says it should be responsibility of each school principal to distribute the Code of Behavior, and then going further to ensure the Code of Behavior is administered fairly and consistently. I just, after talking with a lot of schools about the Code of Behavior, like, for instance, referring back to my meetings with Woodbridge, Stonewall Jackson, Garfield High Schools, Women Leadership and SCA, Patriots, Women Leadership, and Freedom High School in general, I think it's necessary to define exactly, how do we choose what portions of the Code of Behavior that we review and approve, because that's a little bit unclear to me, and then what exactly Prince William County labels as fair and consistent, just because, to me, after a lot of my conversations, and I've said this a lot of times on this board, that there is at least a perceived unfairness in reference to the dress code. And I've said that multiple times, that dress code was made a while ago. And I've heard it from a lot of students that a lot of, a lot of what you find in stores aren't what you're gonna find in the dress code. A lot of slower socioeconomic students, students with a heavier body frame, find it harder to find clothes that adhere to the dress code, and I just, I'm just intrigued to see what happens in the June 5th or the other June meeting as well in relation to that. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Sasan. Your input is absolutely valuable. Any other discussion? Good, okay. Thank you, Ms. Goss. Next, we'll move to 20.02, Milestone Communications Deed of Lease Agreement at Stonewall Middle School. Mr. Chiroki.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Satterwhite.
Can I offer a substitute motion, please, from what everybody has previously read before tonight?
Yes, ma'am.
I move that the Prince William County School Board postpone the vote on the Milestone Communications Deed of Lease Agreement for a telecommunications tower located at Stonewall Middle School until after such a time that the vendor can hold a second community meeting with additional notification to the Stonewall Middle School community and parents.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Deutsch. Any discussion on the motion? Ms. Williams.
I'm just wondering if there's something new or different from this telecommunication tower from any of the other ones near our surrounding schools in existence already? Is this like a different vendor, or?
The procedure is the same, and the methodology in determining the location on-site is parallel on what has been done in past years. There's no change, to my knowledge.
Ms. Satterwhite, do you want to just clarify your concerns?
Yes, thank you. There's an existing tower in the community where the upkeep on the property has not been good, and so there's a negative image in the community right now. I also heard from parents that many of them didn't receive the postcard that was sent out to community members. There was one email that went out. There wasn't a lot of notification to the families, and I would like to see another meeting for the community so that, and see all of the parents notified of that meeting, just to, just for people can ask more questions, because at this point, there are a lot of members of the community who are not happy about this, and I'd like to see us do a little bit more work with the community and then get a better feel for exactly what everybody's thinking, and get more information out there on what's involved with this tower.
Thank you for the clarification. Any further discussion? Ms. Williams.
I just want to know, before we do that, is this gonna impact any timelines or anything with the vendor as far as, that we need to be aware of as a board, because I'm sure there's, I have no idea. That's what I'm asking.
Yeah, I posed a question with staff earlier this evening. Obviously, it would be a two-to-three week delay, but given the fact that this is the first phase, and they ultimately have to go over to the general government side through the process, we don't anticipate, the plan is not to have this tower erected before the start of school or anything like that, but so we believe there's sufficient time. But we want to make sure that the public hears and has an opportunity to speak with any concerns that they may have, so we're very open to what has been presented.
Thank you, Dr. Walts.
Yes, could you please share what, if any, revenue goes to this school? We're always talking about equity and schools that maybe don't have an as easy enough opportunity to make money, what this generates, if you know that tonight. If not, we can do it the next meeting.
Yes. The terms of the contract that has been negotiated with Milestone is that, pending the approval by the school board, that there is an initial $25,000 that is provided to the division, and 50% of the proceeds of that 25 go to the impacted school.
Is that one time, or are we collecting money on a monthly basis?
It's the initial $25,000 in this case, that 50% going to the school is one time. Beyond that, 40% of the gross revenue that comes from the rental, be it from the First Company or any other companies that co-locate on that existing tower, that money goes to the Prince William County School Division. So the school gets the one-time 50% at the initiation of the approval.
And do we have any idea what that 40% looks like?
I do not at this time. I could get that information for you.
Yeah, that would be great. And, Dr. Walts, if the money goes to the school division, is that earmarked for the school that the tower's gonna be sit at?
Only the part that goes to the school itself. The rest of it goes to generate funds for the general fund, which are distributed to all schools.
Would it make sense to earmark the money from that school directly to that school, instead of the one hosting the tower?
Well, I mean, that's something we could revisit. We have that split across the school division on lots of different towers, so that certainly could be something we could look at.
Oh, I see. Okay. All right. So maybe some of those answers to the questions the next time this comes up, that would be fantastic. Or email that to us in advance, that would be fine as well. Thank you, Mr. Chiroki. I think we'll go ahead and do the vote. So a yes vote on this would delay the, the tower until we have the next council meeting. Please
The vote is eight yes unanimous. Motion passed.
Thank you. Board Matters. So let's start with Allison, Ms. Satterwhite of the Gainesville District.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to thank Tyler Elementary School for their hospitality, for their School of Excellence breakfast. It was great to go and honor them and be with them and share their excitement of their next School of Excellence. Also was able to attend the Ronald Reagan Middle School Advisory Council meeting, their last one of the year. And as Dr. Walts mentioned, we had the groundbreaking of Potomac Shores Middle School. That's going to feature the latest design for middle schools. We are going up, and I'm looking forward to seeing that in actuality. I also want to recognize the CASIT program at Battlefield High School, the Center for Applied Sciences and Interactive and Information Technology. I attended their banquet at Battlefield High School. It was a fabulous evening to honor our students, what they've accomplished, and what they're going to be doing in the future. I want to thank Doug Wright from CTE for being present with us from Prince William County Schools. And from Northern Virginia Community College, we had Dr. Chad Knights, Provost of Information Engineering Technologies, Dr. Molly Lynch, Provost of Communication Technologies and Social Sciences, Paula Ford, Dean of Information Engineering Technologies, and Amy Nierman, Director of the Office of Dual Enrollment, all with us to share the excitement with our students that night. Dr. Walts, I want to thank you, and also Principal Ryan Ferreira, for your unlimited support of the program. Without you, CASIT would not be what it is today, so thank you for your support. And I also want to recognize Professor Gail Drake and Julia Renberg for fighting hard for opportunities for our students. It was an absolutely incredible evening, and I can't wait to see what the students accomplish in the future. Thank you.
Mr. Trenum, Brentsville District.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just, I want, we've got more business to do, so I'll be really brief. Just, Sasan and all the rest of the students out there, but especially the seniors, and graduations are right around the corner, the school year's winding down. Hang tight, finish strong, and it'll be over soon.
Ms. Ralston, the Neapsco District.
Thank you. I just want to speak to my teachers and staffing in the Neapsco District. I really do appreciate all the hard work you go through, and, because teaching is not easy, and standing around and trying to get it through this child's head is a little bit more than most people would ever think. So I thank you very much, and I want to thank the teachers, and I sent them a cake in the Neapsco, so I hope they enjoyed that and brought some kind of laughter to them. I believe in laughter. Also, I want to say thank you to the administrators in the Neapsco, because I know I won't get a chance to get to everyone with graduations. I attend high school graduations, and sometimes I don't get home from leaving at 10 o'clock. You take one right after the other. So I'm excited and can't wait to see the graduates. Thank you.
Ms. Lily Jesse, Okaquan District.
Just a couple items. One, I also went to the Innovations at Colgan High School and saw Dr. Walts' daughter, who was going to be a dancer next year. They were fabulous. The choreography was just out of this world. You would never think that these were high school students. Coming up, I wanted to just remind people that there is going to be a health exposition at Freedom High School on Saturday, and it starts at 10 o'clock, and it runs until 2:00. And at that exposition, we will be introducing what Mr. Russo and Dr. Gaddis, a foundation, a corporation project. It's called the Chow Wagon, and these two ladies in this foundation have bought a truck to feed students this summer, and Food Services will be providing food for distribution on that day, so please come out. Thank you.
Ms. Lori Williams, Woodbridge District. I'm, she's gonna go a little bit long, guys, so if at the next meetings you guys want to go a little longer, that's perfectly fine with me. So forgive me for that, and I won't have anything to say. Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Dr. Latif. I just want to say thank you for letting me go a little bit longer. You'll see why in a second. There's a video that's getting ready to come up. I had the pleasure of attending EIP's graduation ceremony last night at George Mason University. And for those who aren't familiar, I just wanted to share why we participate in this program and how amazingly awesome it is. So I think they have some. So, I think they have some. You can do it. You're gonna have bad days. There might be days when you're hungry or sleepy over there. But along the way, it's gonna be a fantastic journey, as long as you don't forget that you matter, and your presence is important, and you're going to make a difference, just because you showed up, you'll be just fine.
Early Identification Program changes lives. We work with students who lead the first in their families to attend college, and we provide year-round services for those students from grades eight through grades 12. For those students who successfully complete the program, they're automatically accepted into George Mason University.
And I think in the seventh grade, you know, my guidance counselor started noticing that I was sort of swaying towards, you know, my involvement with sort of the street gangs that were cropping up around Argent at the time, and so, you know, she sort of encouraged, you know, me to consider the EIP program.
You can see the excitement in the kids' faces, and knowing that they're about to go experience another fun summer, learning and bonding and hanging out with their mentors. It's exciting to know that there's a continuous group coming through, that they're going to be the next generation of students who are gonna impact the world and do something amazing.
And that, that was a lot of what the Summer Academy was. It was just, you know, trying to enrich you with the information you needed to ensure that you, you didn't fall behind.
So, I, I came to the United States when I was 10 years old, sixth grade. Joining EIP was really life-changing. When we came here, it was just me and my mom that integrated here, and I did not speak any English. Seventh grade is when we first heard about the program. It was first starting out in Alexandria City, and that's when my mom was like, "We're definitely joining this." We're definitely joining this program, and we applied for it, and now, nine years later, it's still, we're still a part of it.
They help people realize their dreams, and even if it's $10, right, or if it's $15, all you have those donors will say, "You know what? I have $3,000 to give." Those are dollars, those are monies that can then be used to help students purchase their books. I mean, you talk about direct impact, those dollars have a direct impact and really help students to realize their dreams.
Hey, well, my name is Armando LaHera.
I'm Audrey Zara.
My name is Ingrid Roquevialo.
My name is Mataru Charlo.
My name is Amir Dalmazio. I just graduated with a bachelor's of science in biology.
Graduating from Potomac Senior High School. I'm gonna be going, I'm gonna be attending George Mason here.
I go to, well, I'm graduating this June from Woodbridge High School.
Graduated with a bachelor's in health administration policy.
I graduated from Virginia Commonwealth University in 2017.
I'm the first EIP class from Alexandria City Public Schools, and I'm very proud of that, because I love my county, my city, and I'm going into medical school, medical school, and starting in the fall.
So, they're gonna, these are the students that graduated this year in 2019 from EIP for Prince William County. There's about seven of those students that are going to Mason on scholarship. It's, I bring this to the students' attention because it's from students all across Prince William County, and it's something that's near and dear to my heart. Clearly, I'm an alumni of it, and it's a program that really does provide opportunity for students who may not otherwise attend college, and now, you know, it's a direct result of why I'm sitting in the seat that I'm sitting in, and now I'm a proud parent that's sending her son to college, and not only am I doing that alone, not alone, but I'm also doing that with the support, because we still talk to EIP. Clearly, I go back. I still talk to the counselors from the first year that I was in the program, but it's something that my son doesn't have to go alone at. I don't have to wonder how to send him to college. I don't have to wonder how the process goes, and I just feel very honored that I was able to participate in something like that. And this was the picture, this young lady here is actually a graduate from Prince William County Schools, who is graduating from Mason in the fall of 2019. Her name is Gabriela Rodriguez. She's a graduate of Stonewall Jackson High School, and she was the keynote speaker last night for our students. If you'll bear with me just two seconds, I'd like to give them recognition, because these students not only give up their time in the evenings, they're required to attend tutoring. When I was in it, it was at least once a week, sometimes it could be more. They're required to give up Saturday mornings, sometimes all day, to go on trips to learn about different cultures and ethnicities. They're required to give up three weeks in the summer to go to Mason, to prep them for the following year that they're going to attend high school, because what a lot of people don't know is that a lot of these students are not prepared to do advanced coursework because of their, they have, they don't have that support in their family. So, they get a little extra boost during the summer. It also makes them feel comfortable, and in addition to that, it helps with the retention rate when they do go to college, because 50% of freshmen fall, drop out, because they can't identify with their school, they've never been in that type of environment. So, for me, I started in ninth grade. By the time I got to Mason, I walked around like a champ, like, "I know where everything is, I know how to do this, I know how to go around and, and participate," and so I just wanted us, as a board and for everybody watching, to understand that this is something that we should be proud of, as a county that we participate in, and it just really does, it, it lasts a lifetime, and I'm a living example of that. So, I wanted to thank Dr. Walts for your continued participation in that, and to recognize these students who go above and beyond to take that extra step, and the individuals who support them. So, Mr. Kadeem Ha-Davis is the director right now of the Early Identification Program, and our students graduating from Prince William are, please forgive me if I mispronounce your name, because it is not my specialty, but I just wanted to give it a shot. So, we have Nora Alvi, it looks like Nupong Au, Jessica Alva, Bissam Bagh, Ashley Carmarco, Jocelyn Cruz, Madeline Cruz, Sally Dean, Merwa Elthake, Kayla Phibus, Allison Furman Amaya, Shamuña Jahann, Giancarlo Romirlo Rojias, Devin Johnson, Tracy Keterang Mesa, Rebecca Lehman, Tania Lopez, Melanie Maladono, it looks like Panakano, Andy Malina Campos, Nia Ngung, Morris Peña, Samantha, nope, Samantha Toledo, Daniel Urson, David Valencia, Genesis Villanueva, Jeffrey Villatura, Iris Villeg Sanchez, and James Ubo. I just wanna say congratulations to all of you. It's really something that you, accomplishment, everyone who starts does not finish. I wish you the best of luck, and I have great success in the future, so, and thank you to my board members for giving me a little bit of extra time. I really appreciate that for these outstanding students.
Mr. Deutsch, Coles District.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple of things. We had a wonderful time with Superintendent and with Mr. Russo at the Culinary Night at Cogan. Got to taste, test a lot of food, enjoy a lot of time with other people, as we saw some very creative menu items. I was impressed. We also have one shout-out, and Justin may mention this as well, but it's worth repeating. On Saturday is the Suicide Awareness Walk at Forest Park High School. Incredible event, and I think last meeting, we had some students came to advertise about the event. Students are always do a great job promoting it, leading it, and it's, it's an incredible time for something that needs attention, needs support. So, if you are free, it's either eight or nine o'clock, I think it's, it might be eight, on Saturday, come out to Forest Park High School, and I will call it out for now.
Mr. Woke.
I'll try to be. Potomac District. Thank you, sir. Try to be brief, okay? So, wanna first thank against Sasan, the entire SCA leadership on the One for All Ball. He recognized a lot of people, thanking them for the setup and the configurations. It was a phenomenal event. As a parent of a special-needs child, it just gave me a lot of hope for the future and the progress and what we're doing in, in our county. I'll jump to another one. I went to, two weeks before, right after the last board meeting, I went to a Parents' Summit, a countywide special education resource event on a Saturday at Hampton Middle School. Again, one of our first times doing something like this. So, again, you know, is special education ever perfect in a school system of this large? No, probably not. I can't find anyone out there that has that, but I think we're making major strides as a system with the audit and some of the changes that we've been making, so, Ms. Goss and Dr. Roper and everyone, I think those two events, just again, you know, hopefully, again, they become a tradition, something we do multiple times. I was talking to some of the coordinators there, and they said, "We're already looking at our next one," you know, "for doing that next year," and I'm sure Sasan and his team are looking at handing it off to the next group of leaders for that ball. Want to also say Teacher Appreciation Week, thank our teachers. As a former teacher, it was a special week. It's always great to see, like, you know, the administration of our buildings, you know, do some special events for us, the parents and such. I was able to visit Patty Elementary and write special messages on their cars. It was all washable, don't worry, it didn't vandalize. Ashen Elementary, the PTO had me for brunch or lunch, wanna thank them. Montclair Elementary was able to go visit and go over there and meet with their PTO, so three great visits there. Groundbreaking at Potomac Shores, it's already been mentioned, but wanna thank all the dignitaries. Dr. Latif for, of course, joining Ms. Satterwhite for, you know, trucking across the county for that. Great event, looking forward to the, the new model in the high school, excuse me, the middle school at that site. Grand Park had a great middle school concert that I went to for seventh and eighth grade students in the chorus program. Swans Creek had a great STEM night that I was able to be a part of, and then I was able to visit my old buddy Barry Rosenberg at Triangle Elementary. Barry just keeps on coming back, great guy. He's gonna end the school year out there with a transition right now, so, and of course, Mr. Deutsch mentioned it already, the Suicide Awareness Walk will be this weekend at Forest Park. Proud to get to have that in the Potomac District, but it's also shared, because there are so many other high schools involved, and it seems even more talking to students from the One for All Ball that a lot of other students from across the county are going, so it's great to see that expanding and greater opportunities there. Thank you.
Okay, so I'm quick, just thank you Battlefield High School for inviting me to participate in the twenty ninth, 25th Annual Putnam County Spelling Bee. There's a clip on my social media site, if, I'm looking to be discovered, so as soon as that happens, there'll be a vacancy in this seat. Thank you to the, the great leaders at Woodbridge High School for their first annual home run derby. That was outstanding, a lot of fun, great time. All right, can someone read us into a motion into approval of the closed session agenda, 2301?
You have to adjourn this meeting.
Do I have to adjourn?
Yep.
Oh, got it, so, no, I don't. We don't, we don't adjourn, because we're, we're still in closed session, we're gonna come back out after that meeting. We're going to closed session. I need a motion to go into.
Mr. Chairman, I move that Prince William County School Board.
Thank you, Mr. Deutsch.
Closed session agenda is recommended.
Mr. Chairman, I second.
Second by Ms. Williams. Any discussion? Please vote. This is for the agenda. Then we gotta do the closed session.
Yep.
Okay, and I'll take a motion to enter closed session.
Mr. Chairman, I move that President of Virginia Code 2.2, Jazz 3711 A1, to Prince William County School Board, we enter closed session for the purpose of discussing the performance of Division Superintendent conducting his annual performance evaluation and considering any contract amendments.
Mr. Chairman.
Second, Ms. Williams. Any discussion? Please vote. Now, we're voting again, second vote. Okay, we will now enter closed session, and it could be, could be 15 minutes, or could be 15 hours. Thank you.